Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the December 7th, 2023 Smyrna Municipal Planning Commission Meeting. I will now call this meeting to order. And with that, I would ask everyone to stand and I'll lead us in prayer. And Mark has the pledge tonight.
Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for how you bless us and how you've blessed our town so richly. Father, we pray that you'll continue to watch over our emergency responders, our police officers and firefighters. We pray for our workers that are in the field and in the office as well, that you'll protect them and their family. Please be with us tonight as we go about the town's business. Grant us wisdom and discernment as we make our decisions. Just thank you for all that you do for us, and we pray this in your name. Amen.
Hail the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, Charles. Citizens' comments. Okay, our next item is approval of the minutes of the November 2nd, 2023 meeting. Counselor, are the meeting minutes in order? Any questions from the commission?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve the minutes. Do I have a second? Motion and a second. Further discussion. All those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye. Opposed? The minutes are approved. We are now on to old business. Our first item is a sketch plat, Lindwood, Ammerville Road and Independent Hill Road. Owner, developer, D.R., P.A.C.
This is a sketch plat for a development off Ammerville Road, Independent Hill Road, called Lindwood. It's three tracts of land that total 689 and a half acres. This is a PRD zoning district. It was approved several years ago now, and then it was amended in about 2015 or so. This is the first time it's gone beyond the zoning stage, our annexation to zoning stage. And so this would be the sketch plat for the entirety of the development, which is 1,500 lots total, 1,200 of those being detached single-family and 300 of them being townhomes, which is consistent with the approved PRD. We had several comments. Some of these are very standard comments, but we would still include those. So like, comments 1, 2, 3, and 4 would all fall under that category. Comment number 5, does the thoroughfare plan does designate Ammerville Road as a minor arterial, so the required minimum roadway there is 40 feet from the center line. At this, the sewer is not available here yet. There's a lot of discussion around that sewer. There was an agreement between the town and the developer that was agreed to several years ago. That is, is in the midst of being renegotiated. There is also a possibility for, which basically that sewer would, as agreed, it would come down Ammerville Road. We're trying to move it over to be a gravity sewer main in the Stewart Creek watershed, Stewart Creek area. And so there is a, as a temporary measure, there is a possibility to, for them to attach the sewer through the adjoining development to the north, which is Riley Downs, which is very recently approved, as a, kind of as a way for them to be able to start development, build some houses while the, the sewer main's being done. All that's still in negotiation and discussion right now. It hasn't been formally agreed to yet. But that is, so sewer is not available now, but it is being worked out for how it could be available, essentially is what I'm trying to get to. Comment number 7, the second entrance will be required with the development of the 100th home. Phase 1, as they're showing Phase 1, which is one of the pages of the plan, Phase 1 is about, would be up to 200 lots. There would be two entrances there through Riley Downs and through the adjoining existing street there that's to the east that would come out to Ammerville Road. Phase 2, 3, and 4 would come off of Ammerville Road and would only have one way in and out until Phase 5 gets built. And so we did have a concern about that. Not really concerned about the first phase, but those future phases, there would have to be some sort of connection made either over to Independent Hill, back to Phase 1 somehow to create more than one way in and out of the development, once that Phase 2 hits that 100th house. Number 8 is kind of an informational comment regarding required minimum fire flow is 1,000 gallons per minute at 20 PSI. There was a traffic study done eight years ago when this first last came in. So they, but that is certainly a lot of changes since that time. So they will need to submit a new study. And so that's still to come. We have not received that yet. But they, obviously any improvements that were recommended by that study, the, would have to be installed by the developer. Number 10 is kind of an, at this point is kind of an informational comment, but they will have to submit road names and those, approval of those road names by 911 as each phase comes in. Comment number 11, we'd ask them to indicate where the construction entrances will be located. We didn't have, we weren't comfortable with that construction traffic coming through, you know, County Road through the existing subdivision. And so they're, what they have indicated, those, construction entrance would be off of Ammerville Road where they control or use some of the adjoining developments, such as the Riley Downs entrance, at least temporarily, to, as they work through this, so that they would not be using, coming through an existing neighborhood. So they've indicated that's what they would be doing. The connection of, I mentioned on the, as far as the street to the east, that's Drew Street. That's an existing road. The, the property boundaries between, for this track and the adjoining track to the south kind of preclude either track from connecting to Drew Street because it kind of meets kind of in the middle of that existing right-of-way. There was a, an ingress egress easement granted there that, however, that wasn't a public. That's a private ingress egress easement. And so basically, and so they have indicated that they're working with that property owner that warrant either this track or the next track, that's property to the south if it develops and develops before this track, that there would be an agreement that either or would be a signatory to that final plat and dedicate that right-of-way. So that issue is being worked through. And so that'll have, would have come, you know, if this, once this plat is approved and they begin that preliminary plat and final plat stages, that would have to be confirmed and worked out. 13 and 14 are comments from Consolidated Utility District. They have indicated that there's not adequate fire flow at this time and that there are some offset improvements that are required to be, to be met for this development. And so that would have, they obviously have to work through that with CUD as well before they can get any permits. That would have to be in place before the permits could be issued. So I think those are all our comments.
Questions or comments for Kevin?
Kevin, you mentioned this was back in 2014 or 15. This initially happened, was approved. I know a lot's changed out that way since then. I seem to recall, I think I was on planning commission then, I seem to recall the sewer was the main driving force behind this and that it was going to have to come down through Ammerville, right? So trying to bring it in in another direction now, the purpose behind, that's not the agreement I think that we had with them at the time. Is that correct?
That's not. And the town, I mean, that's something we kind of initiated and wanted to look at because from a, from an engineering standpoint, every, it will be better to be, to have a gravity line into Stewart Creek. And so the other issue is the force main within T-Dot right-of-way. And you have to work with T-Dot even allow that or not, too. That issue still had to be resolved as well. And so the idea, we had an agreement, there was an, who was going to pay for what and all those kind of things. Council approved all that. I think we're seven years in, there's a 10-year agreement, we're seven years in now, and nothing's happened yet. So the idea would, if we, would be basically that the commitment from the developer would basically be financially, would be, have the same idea as what they had before. It would just be that the town would then run the project instead of the developer running the project, get the easements and put the sewer in the creek. And it would all gravity that way versus a pump station and several miles of four-inch force main.
Well, if you came in, you mentioned Riley Downs. And I know that area is seeing some potential growth as well from a sewer capacity. How would this then tie into that and still be able to have capacity without going to the Ammerville product we asked them to do?
We, our utilities department has worked through that with them and they're, they're okay with up to, I think, 200 lots of the 1,500. That would be the maximum amount. They, that could be, could happen there before.
Is that with all the impending properties there that are?
That's my understanding, yes. So eventually, I think all of it's going to gravity to, once Stewart Creek, that line is in, it would all gravity that way. But that would be kind of as a, again, would be as a way for the developer to begin developing while waiting on this other main to get put in, basically.
Well, here's a little concern I've got. If it's been almost eight years, seven and a half, eight years, done nothing, and they waited for somebody else to bring sewer up the backside, it seems to me like they're trying to tag on to something here that's separate from the agreement we had with them to come up the Ammerville corridor.
Yeah. And that's, again, that's something that's, and I haven't been as involved in those discussions as, as certain of the town manager and others have been. But it's my understanding that was kind of as a way to try to, as a negotiation through that renegotiation of the agreement as a way to help them out a little bit while they were helping us out, I guess, so to speak, with the, with coming off the force main in the road and going into Stewart Creek.
So what I'm hearing is there's still negotiations for this agreement that we haven't reached an agreement or decision.
Right.
And we're talking about the potential, or they're asking for the potential of doing something on a temporary basis while still not having a finalized agreement.
Yeah, that, yeah. And that's, I know Mr. Peach received the latest discussion of this afternoon from their attorneys. I mean, that's still an ongoing discussion happening.
Would it be premature to approve this until those negotiations bear fruit?
I certainly think it's a question to ask. Did you hear Charles's question?
I'm sorry, no, I didn't.
Would it be premature to move forward with this until the negotiations have completed?
I mean, I think we would like to have everything agreed to and signed on the dotted line from a staff perspective. Certainly, I think that would, we would feel better about that, yes. I mean, there's other issues, obviously, with, that we would address later with the traffic study and other things. But I think this is kind of, for us, I mean, and they can work, we gotta work with CUD on the water issue. I know they've got, they know what they have to do there, I think, as well. You know, the sewer, for us, the sewer, we want to be sure we have everything nailed down exactly, agreed to before we can do, do anything happen with this property, really.
Do the staff or Jeff, do you guys have any idea where we're at? I mean, are we 30 days out, 60 days out, longer before we finalize an agreement? Or do you guys have a feel on that?
Well, it's really two different tracks. So right now, until there is something else, we do have the standing agreement that's in place about the
The original?
The forced main that has the pump stations and all that. Under the agreement, really the only main reference to plats is if fewer lots are identified in preliminary plat for any development phase that was contemplated in the conceptual site plan, such unused units of density may be reallocated by the developer to other development pods within the developer's project. So it doesn't address a lot of other plat issues. But under the agreement, obviously, the existing agreement was good faith of going forward if it meets any of the criteria, those types of things. But obviously, it's under this planning commission body on whatever you choose. If you, there's reasons that you don't like the plat itself, those types of things, that would be your reasoning for approval or denial. So keep in mind, it may have to change if, it sounds to me that if, if we change the manner in which we're bringing the sewer there, that may change.
Does that then change the entire agreement? Does that then change the agreement we have?
Some aspects of it. It would be laid out in the new amended, it's going to amend the current agreement. But the, you know, they've already had the PRD approved, so they've got that. So this is just the, the process that you have for any other sketch plan or sketch plat. You know, I would urge you to consider it in that manner because we do have an existing agreement. Granted, those things may change. And it's true, everything that Kevin said, that both parties are looking at going a different route. But I would just consider it as you would any other dislikes or likes with any other sketch plan.
And maybe consider as to whether or not this is a critical component
Correct.
of approval of the sketch plat that's being presented to us.
Correct.
Because I would imagine, well, actually sewer, you know, is a critical component whenever we're looking at a plat as far as knowing how it's going to run, how it, you know, how it gets there, how it, how it, things leave, how it develops through a subdivision. Would that not be a fair statement?
Yeah, sure.
Other questions or comments?
Tell us a little bit more, you were talking about, on comment 12, about the connections. Because as it, as written, it doesn't seem it's feasible to have that connection. So tell me, repeat again what you were talking about.
Yeah, it isn't. As it's currently set up, it's not. However, what, there is, it's the, it's basically the extreme northeastern part of the project. Drew Street subs into this property as well as the adjoining property to, to the south of that portion of it. And so there was an ingress egress easement agreement kind of between two property owners several years ago. That was an agreement to allow for access. It wasn't an agreement to allow for public road to be built and a dedication of right-of-way. And so what they have, are working through, and it hasn't been, again, that's another one that hasn't necessarily been finalized yet, but they're, they're working through with that property owner is for, basically for either side. Because I think that property in the, to the south there is potentially being contemplated for development as well. And so depending on which property owner develops first, I think the agreement is the other one will be, is, would be willing to agree to, to dedicate the right-of-way necessary for that connection to be made.
But that hasn't been finalized?
It hasn't been finalized yet, but I think that's something, again, they're working through. I think they're all, both sides are agreeable to that. They just have to actually go through the process of actually agreeing to it and signing everything and all that, recording it. But, so I think that, that piece of it is relative, as long as those two property owners are both agreeable to it, that's a fairly easy thing to work out for that specific road connection.
If something happens where one of those property owners or both, and they say, no, we're not doing it, then they're
Then they're, then They would have to try to purchase some property or whatever they end up doing.
There, there's several things in here, like the Drew Street connection, construction entrance, the sewer. There are several things. And I know, I think you said earlier that the sewer now at Riley would accommodate 200 homes. Is that right?
Right.
And like, I think Mark alluded to this, is that for the accommodations of everything else that could be built around Riley that would tie into that sewer anyway? That would be closer to it?
Yes. Yeah. My understanding is that was something that we were, that the, the, utilities department was willing to, that that would be okay for them to do the 200 houses. But that would kind of be the most that we could allow for.
Yeah, because there's still some land. I was out there earlier this week. There's still some land that, that's got some farms on it. I call it farms, small farms. And if they develop, how many homes could be in there that would tie into that sewer? Is that, is that being taken into effect?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
There's some, there's some
To get, to get to this property, you're going to go through some other properties that'll probably have to develop.
Well, which would be the Riley Downs development, I suppose.
All the way over to the Drakehead property? And I know some of that is being looked at for development now.
Right.
So that's, that was my question. What Mike's asking is, if you bring that on, can you still bring this on, depending on what that capacity looks like?
Yeah. And again, I
A 300-house development is right up from Riley Develops. Does that put them out on getting into that sewer because they're closer, but we brought something across all the property lines?
Yeah, that's my understanding that that wouldn't be an issue, but I'm probably, I'll have to defer maybe to Mr. Strange about to answer that specifically. Because, but that's my understanding is what we were able to do, the 200 houses. I felt comfortable with that.
Any other questions or staff?
A quick one.
Sure.
Can you discuss the scale of the amenities? This is a very large project.
That's already been approved?
That was approved as part of the PUD. I mean, they have
That was approved about seven years ago.
Is it a plunge pool? Is it a real pool?
I think there's, the PUD had, gave them some options, which I kind of paged. 4.0.
Maybe 5.
Yeah, 5.0.
They have some options going on. They're required to have
Kind of the main, kind of amenities or whatever is, they're showing a little over five acres. But that, it's about 300, over 300 acres of it, because it basically is open space. But, which is close to half the property. But There's about 330 acres in open space of the 689. They're showing, they got about 5.2 acres kind of in that main amenity area. They've got some other areas, which is on, you can kind of see that a little bit better. 2, or 1.01, kind of they have the, kind of the main amenity area kind of centrally located with some other smaller areas, kind of, with kind of a red.
I think it's laid out nicely. The question really is scale. Because a development of this size has the potential to put stress on the park systems. So for instance, you can have a top lot that'll really accommodate the needs of the neighborhood, or you can have a top lot for three kids. So I was just curious about the scale.
Yeah. Again, I don't know that I have, other than what they, on that one sheet, as far as the scale of those, and they had some, they've got pools, playgrounds, you know, various things they've shown as optional things in all those amenity areas. I don't know if they know exactly to this point where all those would necessarily be and those kind of things.
Well, with a 200 lot approval, if, if that were to occur, we're not going to see any of these amenities in that 200 lots, I wouldn't think.
Not, not the larger
Or so it would be very little if any, right?
Right. There's, I think there's one shown in that first phase.
Yeah. So the rest of them may be years before they come.
A development of this size will be many years.
Yeah.
Sure. Yeah. It'll take many years.
Chairman, I've had some comments from citizens who live in the Stonewood subdivision. Sure. If I may share some of their concerns. And, and this may actually also tie back into the original agreement from a long time ago, right? So I'm, just to be clear. So my, my general understanding is, is that the homes that are immediately adjacent to the Stonewood subdivision, which we can see clearly on these, on this map that's up, those particular homes that are being developed or would be developed would be of a larger size, larger square footage, not to have any of the smaller single-family or any high density in that area. Is that still part of the, part of the original agreement?
Yes, that's part of the agreement.
Because we intentionally made sure of that.
Yeah, that. There's a, there's a requirement for, I think it's 50 feet or some distance between them and Stonewood that's left open, which they've got shown there.
But he's right. The townhomes were moved to the opposite side.
Yeah. And that's, and that's the secondary concern. Just again, to follow up, is the buffer between Stonewood and this development. Again, you can primarily see in the, in the corner there, for example, you can see a lot of the Stonewood subdivision bumping up against this new development. There is a buffer noted on here, but, but is there any definition to that buffer? Is it, because ultimately, it should be a very robust barrier.
Yeah. My, my recollection of the agreement was that there was a distance, 50 feet or some distance between, from the property line before you get to the new property lines or the new lots. It's, that it would basically be undisturbed. It's existing tree area, tree cover already there, that they would basically leave that area alone, more so than building a buffer strip kind of thing or fencing. It would just kind of be, leave what's there alone. Again, my recollection was 50 feet, which is, you know, they've got that area on a bigger scale like this, it may not look that way, but that's, they're meeting that requirement, as it's shown right now.
I don't, any other questions? I don't currently have access to the original agreement, but is that something we can confirm?
It states the conceptual site plan, conditions that require 50-foot principal building setback from any common boundary with adjacent properties which are not within developer's project. If such adjacent property is owned Ag 1 or otherwise as agricultural zone property.
Yeah. I think there was, it was specific to Stonewood. There was two or three things. The other thing was, there's stub streets within Stonewood to this property, and it was required, basically that those, this development would not tie into Stonewood at all from a traffic standpoint, which is a one, I think there's two.
Okay. So the, the buffer, the defining the buffer between the two has already been approved in the original approval, correct?
Yes.
And the size of the homes adjacent to, also have already been approved. It's all done.
Correct.
So that's not in question at this juncture.
Correct.
So we want to make sure that I'm, I'm clear, as well as any citizens. You happen to be watching or clear of that. Okay.
Okay. Anything else from staff? I think you're here on behalf of this project, is that okay?
That is correct.
If you could give us your name and your address, please.
Sure. Kyle Griffin, 2305 Klein Avenue, Nashville, Tennessee. I am the engineer record on this project, working with the developer. I just wanted to clarify a couple of items. Thank you, Kevin, so much for the, the presentation Thank you, Kevin, so much for the, the presentation of the project as it stands, I couldn't have answered those questions better than myself. I did want to elaborate a little bit on the sewer. We, over the last two months, have really taken into consideration the existing network of force mains and gravity lines in, in our area, Derby Run, Cedar Hills, Cedarstone Community Park, and we have determined that, in addition to the 200 that we're proposing, there's several additional lots, I think up to like 500 or 600 lots, that can go into the existing system without, without any problems. Like, there's capacity for Brierley, there's capacity for our initial phase, there's capacity for a few other developments around that space. Now, we, and by no means are trying to truncate the fact that that agreement still stands. We are not trying to get out of that, we are just renegotiating the terms simply to go from a force main setup to all gravity. Those funds that were originally allocated for the force main, we want it to go to that gravity line, to that Stewart's Creek line, we're just asking for a little bit of grace to get the ball moving and provide some improvements to the system at our own cost in order to make that 200 lot phase work. Now, I know the connection to Drew, to Drew Street is causing a little bit of heartburn. We are committed to reducing that Phase 1 to 100 lots if we cannot get that connection agreement finalized. So, what's allowed is 100 lots, or up to 100, 100 lots, and I think our subsection of Phase 1 is only 99. So, a Section 1 of 99 could go through one access point, even though we feel like we do have two very close to being finalized. With that, I think those were the two, the two main problem points, I, I think we are compliant with the original zoning setbacks, we do have the larger lots around the perimeter, we have the 50-foot plus in some areas. The amenities are going to be comparable for the size of our development. We're not going to put a tiny little pool with 1,500 units. So, we, we are mindful of that. There is a lot of land planning and strategic placement of amenities, trails up in hills where, um, where we aren't developing at all. I think the, the biggest contribution that, the base, the, the, the big thing that I'm excited about is we're preserving 50% of the site as open space. We have natural spaces that we can utilize for, for active living. All the spaces will be well programmed, we have very particular programming on all this, and that'll, that'll show up as we get to subsequent phases, preliminary plats and construction documents. I believe that's most of the major agreements that have come up, I think, one other thing, CUD, currently, they do not have access, or they do not have the pressure and the flow that we are required to have, but we know what items need to be improved, and we are in agreeance with CUD to make those improvements so that we can service this site. So, with that, I'm, I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have. Thank you.
Any questions? Kyle, thank you for that. I, I don't know that I have questions for Kyle or anybody, but I think where I'm coming with this is, um, there's a lot of unanswered questions here. We just, uh, you know, what, if, if we only do 99 lots, we can do that. If we can get with CUD, we can make that work. If we get sewer from some sites over to this site, we can make it work. There's a lot of intangibles in there that are a little uncomfortable for me. Okay, anything else? Uh, I think it was alluded to, we don't know the terms of any agreements yet. Right. And that's, if you will, I think that makes me feel a lot more comfortable knowing something's done rather than speculating that it can be. Agreed. Other comments or questions?
From a procedural standpoint, as, as far as any voting relative to this, again, going back to the buffer, still, still some concerns, even though there may be a, a 50-foot buffer between, uh, the Stonewood subdivision and the new development, uh, is there any ability to request additional buffer if there are large gaps in that space?
That part's done.
Okay. Wanted to make sure. Everybody's clear on that?
Yeah, and we actually had a, quite a large number of folks from Stonewood.
Some are here tonight.
And some of them, okay, they may be here tonight, and I know that was something that was very well, you know, discussed at, at that point, and, and I thought at the time, and, and still do, that we reached a fair... But it's a fair question, I know what you're doing, you're trying to make sure they know? Yeah, so, it's a very fair question, and we, we did, we dove into that quite deeply. We had a room full for a couple of months of, of Stonewood residents, and we tried to hear their concerns and address those, so...
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I don't know what the terminology is, but motion to deny based on all the unanswered questions. I know Mr., Mr. Peach is going to help me how to say that.
Unfinalized plans?
Yeah. Unfinalized plans.
Regarding staff comments?
Regarding staff comments.
Okay, I have a motion to deny based upon unanswered questions to staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, further discussion. All those in favor of denying this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is denied. Our next item under site plans is McDonald's 352 Needham Drive, sorry?
We do need to have a vote on that addition to Villages of Valley Green.
I'm sorry, say that again?
The addition to Villages of Valley Green, the one that has been requested to be the first.
Oh, I missed that, sorry.
Yeah.
Motion to defer.
I have a motion to defer the addition to Valley, Village of Valley Green, Section 4. Do I have a second?
Do we need to list like 30 days or...
Next meeting?
Next meeting.
The next meeting, we find.
Motion to defer until the next meeting?
Okay, I have a motion to defer until the next meeting. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second, further discussion. All those in favor of this deferral request signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is denied. Chairman couldn't wait to get his Big Mac on. Yeah. Saw McDonald's, man, I was like all over there. I'm ready. I, I mean, I'm just like half a mile from there. Shoot, yeah.
He's a hamburger.
Mitch, I think this is you, so save me here.
Yes, would you like to introduce the item?
I will, again, introduce it again, right?
So, make sure official.
We'll make this official, then. Our next, real next item under site plan is McDonald's 352 Needham Drive, owner, developer, Western, Vester Waldron Family LTD partnership.
Perfect, all right. So, this is from last month, the item that was deferred, there were some questions regarding the utility location as well as streetscaping requirements along Needham Drive not being able to be met, so, um, in working with the applicant over the past month, we've came to the plan that is brought to you tonight. So, plans last month also showed, I believe, a 4,000 square foot building, give or take, and this month, it's been reduced down to what McDonald's has as their smallest building size in their franchise, which is 3,818 square feet. So, they're trying their best to maximize the site with their smallest building and trying to meet all of our requirements at the same time. So, that is one difference from last month. The, a couple of other changes from the plan that went out in the packet that you have in front of you tonight, the landscaping square footage has increased a little bit, 2,321 square feet instead of the 2156 square feet. Parking requirement is now being met this month, so what is required is 38 spaces based on the 3,818 square foot building, and they are showing for 40 spaces, so they are now meeting that requirement. Handicap parking required is two spaces, and they are showing for two as well. So, there were some, there was a discrepancy as far as where the utilities were located as far as the gas and water lines along Needham Drive, whether they're trickling onto the site or if they're kind of teetering on the edge of the property lines by the sidewalk, there's a sidewalk that runs on, along Needham Drive, so, uh, the water line does go onto the site and come off the site in certain locations, so, due to that, the landscaping along Needham Drive physically cannot meet streetscaping requirements, the utilities department doesn't want trees and other deep-rooted system vegetation on top of the utility lines for obvious reasons, for maintenance and such in the future. So, as a result, they are showing shrubbery along Needham Drive, and that is the closest that they can get to meeting our streetscaping requirement, so, um, just pointing out, they cannot meet our streetscape requirements as presented, but due to utilities, that is the reason why. Design review, so same as last month, nothing's changed on that, it's meetings are design review requirements in all aspects of it, the HVAC units will be rooftop mounted, and they are screened with parapet, uh, they did present staff with a, kind of a mock with the person that's driving on Sam Reilly in Needham, would, it would be hidden from all aspects, so, uh, we're all covered as far as that's concerned. Standard comments, one through five, will all remain, and then, uh, several of the staff comments have been addressed since the packets went out. Comment 1 is regarding the utilities, that has been addressed. Comment 2 is also utilities, has been addressed. Comment 3 is regarding the parking number in the site data table, that has been addressed as well. Comment number 4 is regarding the streetscaping along Needham, uh, so once again, just making a comment that streetscaping is not being met, but that is due to the utility locations. Comment 5 has been addressed regarding the setback lines being labeled. Comment 6, the address on the cover page was incorrect, so they have done that and corrected it. Comment number 7 is regarding the angled parking spaces, not meeting what our requirements are showing, that has been addressed and can be removed. Comment number 8 regarding the reference to Clarksville Traffic Manual has been removed. Comment number 9 is for the construction entrance dimensions, that has been addressed as well, can be removed. Comment number 10 is regarding what any of the easements that are located on the site will require an easement, so staff can get on the property to access those utilities and make any repairs if necessary in the future, so, we will need a plat to be submitted to dedicate those easements in the future, so, comment number 10 will remain. Comment number 8 is in regards to the water line, reuse water line, and that has been addressed. And then, number 12 is about the sidewalk connection, we want to make, so, Dutch Brothers has a sidewalk that stops at this property, we want to make that, sure that connection point is made to Needham Drive, so we have sufficient ADA accessibility to Dutch Brothers, and that comment has been addressed. Well, so I had another comment on here, we don't have hard copies of the building elevations, so we just like the applicant to submit hard copies of those elevations, so we can have those on file. Uh, so, in summary, comment number 4, 10, and then the additional comment regarding the elevations is all remains as part of the staff concerns, so, with that, staff recommend approval, um, potentially without the, leaving on comment number 4 regarding the meeting streetscape requirements because they physically cannot meet those. And the applicant is here tonight, if you have any questions further.
Questions from Mitch?
So, all design review's been met now?
Correct. In regards to the, in regards to the building and then the vegetation, as much as they tried to get as close as they could to meeting it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I would, I like the existing sidewalk, because, you know, part of what we're seeing here is a, uh, area that we're trying to make as walkable and accessible as, as we can, considering the residential growth that will occur here as well, so, I'm, I'm glad to see that. Other questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. Okay, we are now on to new business unless I'm skipping around again. All right, our first item under annexation, zoning, and plan of service request is Jared Cunningham, Rocky Fork Amble Road, annexation and PRD zoning request.
This is a request, uh, for one tract of land, about 28.42 acres, um, currently zoned RM in Rutherford County, I've requested to be zoned PRD. This is a piece of property that the town has essentially annexed all the way around it, and so, um, but this was not a part of any request previously, and so it was, was left out, and so this would, would annex this, this track and complete, kind of close up the hole there. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R1, R3, and PRD, uh, which is the courtyards at Stewart's Creek, PRD, which is basically to the north, um, north, west, and south adjoining properties there is, is that development. Land use plan would support medium-density, single-family residential in this area. Uh, the major thoroughfare plan does designate Rocky Fork Amble Road as a minor arterial roadway, an adequate right-of-way is shown to be dedicated for this street. And this request of PRD is for a 103 lot, single-family development, to be known as Evergreen Point. We had a few comments to go through, number, comment number 5 was an informational comment regarding the grading permit. Comment 6, uh, this does join, as a state, the courtyards of Stewart Creek, uh, we just asked them to coordinate with that subdivision with regards to street and utility connections as well as the finished contours. That project, that first phase, has had a preliminary plat approval, and so, uh, they have indicated that they will, will certainly do that, but we, that was something we had wanted them to be sure they, they, they did. Number 7, the, the range of houses that are proposed here are 1,600 to 3,500 square feet, and so, because that is getting really close to 3,600 square feet, we did want to point out to them, and this is, again, primarily informational, that any house construction over the, that 3,600 square feet in size would require additional fire flow beyond 1,000 gallons per minute, in 20 PSI, which we have typically, and that, and I just did indicate to them again that that includes all the, the garages and porches and, and those kind of things, not just heated and living space, heated and cooled living space. Comment number 8, um, this, there's some pretty significant topographical changes on this property, um, and so, there will most likely be critical lots, uh, once we get to that preliminary plat stage, because it's there, um, and so, we would identify those at that stage. I do want to point out, just because this is something that's unique, that we haven't really seen before, at least on inter-residential development, if you look in the, the kind of the booklet of information, that, not the bigger map, but just the booklet of information, page 7 of that, um, there is a, kind of a red, I'm sorry, orange dashed line, um, there that's kind of a, kind of curves through the property, that's an elevation, which is labeled as, uh, that's basically existing topography of 760 above sea level, that is the maximum height that CUD can provide water service to, and so, they are proposing, uh, basically to, uh, lower the elevation of that, anything inside that orange, uh, area, orange arc there, uh, to, to essentially lower the elevation of the property to get, to get it down to that 760 elevation in order to develop the project, at least that portion of the project. I think we estimated at, at its highest point, it would be about a 36-foot wall in the back. Now, it was sloped down from there, and that's just as an estimate.
Yeah, that was, my question's along the red dotted line on that page.
Right, I'm sorry, I don't know that we can see that on the screen, but, um, so I guess this would be a, a straight wall, if you will?
Yes.
Would it be built up like a retaining wall, or would it just be a standard, just an earth drop-off?
It would be earth and probably a lot of rock, you know? Again, it was sloped down to where on either end of it, you would meet back up to that 760 elevation where it wouldn't be much of a wall, but it would, at its... where it wouldn't be much of a wall, but it would, at its highest point, approximately thirty-six feet. They would, they have indicated they're going to put a fence at the top of it and all that kind of stuff.
For life, life safety type reasons, okay.
But that is, again, I just wanted to point that out, it's not something, we, we certainly have seen that in other developments that are more commercial in nature maybe, but not in the residential, so that's.
Over behind target?
Yeah. So, again, so that, again, a lot of to- uh, topographical changes and so there will be some, certainly will be some critical lots within this. The, the rest of those um, are, are from consolidated utility district. There's an existing twelve inch water main there along, in Rocky Fork Amble Road and the other developments in this area have not had an issue meeting that. The, the minimum fire flow, they had, we have not received a bull service, bull serve letter yet from them. So we don't have that confirmed, but that's, it's not been an issue in any of the other developments to meet the fire flow requirements, so. Yeah, I think that's all that I have.
Kevin, one of the roads at the, I guess the top part where it says PRD, that road is going to tie into this subdivision back to Amble Road and then there's also another exit out of this subdivision on the Amble Road.
Well, it's Rocky Fork Amble.
Yeah, Rocky Fork, where it's, where it says R1.
That's correct, because there will be, there will be two entrances. That, the adjoining development, that's the courtyards at Stewart's Creek, that one.
The front of it.
The, has, the preliminary plat has been approved in that, which would include that, that portion of that, that roadway, that stub street there.
And there, it's showing two connections already there, did it, correct?
Yeah, there's two connections into that development. You have, essentially you ended up with two directly to this development. Two and one, primary connection is Stewart's Creek or courtyards, well, two, but then, and then a future stub to the west there.
And there, uh, there's not very many homes from this connection point to Rocky Fork Amble anyway. Where it's coming into that, the courtyards.
Right.
As far as traffic flow in and out of that subdivision.
Yeah, there wouldn't be that, it would be, like, so this is a hundred and three lots, so we have the two entrances, but.
Truly not a concern right now, but it will be in the future. If the opposite side of the road where it's R1 develops, um, you may have a lot, I hope they can line up the connection points, so we're not, we don't have five or six entrances on the Rocky Fork Amble just within a quarter mile of each other.
Right, I mean, I think that area that's zoned R1 was fairly recently annexed, it was something, they basically are building one house there. Obviously that could change down the road, but, but right now it's just one driveway that comes into that property.
Fairly small parcel.
It's fairly small, you know, there's obviously some adjoining track north of it that goes up to Cuthbert Church Road and, you know, it could be something more.
That's County Road, right? Rocky Fork Amble?
No, this is, this portion of it has been annexed already, yeah.
So, how long will it be or have y'all talked about improving the road out there?
We're working on that now.
We, we have an item later on in your agenda to, to, as a mandatory referral to begin purchasing right away.
Kevin, did we have any critical yacht, uh, lots in the courtyard at Stewart's Creek? I'm trying to recall.
I don't think we did in that first phase, that first, but we may as we get further south. Because there's some steep, steep topo.
Topo to the west of that too.
Yeah.
Especially, you remember, we didn't even.
Yeah, this, this area, yeah, we, which we didn't anticipate someone completely taking out a hill, so. So we didn't require a stub to the east.
Okay, alright. Other questions for Kevin? I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments remarked, do I have a second?
Second.
Second to ten, further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this motion is approved. Okay, we are now on to preliminary plats, Lee Road subdivision, sixty-five fifty-four and sixty-five fifty-eight Lee Road, owner, developer, David Weekly Homes.
Yes, this is the, the preliminary plat for the uh, the annexation and zoning that was fairly recently approved on Lee Road. It's two tracts of land, thirty-three point ninety-nine acres, it's one hundred lots. And so this would be the plat for the entirety of the development, they're showing two phases. But we're showing, on this preliminary plat, we're showing all, all of it as one time, as one plat. We had a few standard comments, uh, one through four, which would all need to remain regarding the standard stuff there. Uh, number five, just to point out that this thoroughfare plan does designate Lee Road as a collector and they are showing right of way to be dedicated there. Number six regarding the road names, they have shown those names. We do still need to get the nine one one approval of those names, uh, we haven't received that yet. Number seven, all lots will be required to be serviced by gravity sewer, not pump stations or anything. They are, the connection on the sewer connection is, they will have to cross uh, an adjoining property to the east. Uh, so we did, comment number eight, we did ask them to, to uh, provide that easement documentation and, you know, and will have to be, be required to be dedicated to the town as a public easement. Number nine was regarding critical lots, there are not any critical lots in this development. So we can take that one off. Uh, comment number ten, uh, there were some improvements, uh, what was labeled as open space four, which is kind of the, if you're looking at the plat, kind of the bottom left corner, the northwestern corner, which had some, and so there were some areas shown on the PUD that was for some, uh, some improvements in that area. They did move that, um, because that was one of the, as they were working with the, the adjoining property owners to the west, um, that was one of the concerns that some of those property owners had, so they've actually kind of removed those improvements, um, and so they're, they relocated them to, to a different area within the development though, it was basically just a kind of a walking trail. And so they've, they have moved that to another location there and so, um, they did, they've, they've addressed comment number ten, essentially. I would, do want to point out, just one, the only real difference between this plat and the approved PRD, they did have to change the location of where the stub street is. Again, looking at it on the screen there to the left, that's the north uh, side. It was shown uh, at a different location, but in, as part of this, as they were preparing these, the plat, there is a cemetery in that area and so they had to move that, but that's, that is a little bit different. Other than that, the road layouts is the same and the number of lots is the same, all of that. I did want to point that out. There is a, it's part of the existing driveway to one of those neighbors to the west actually kind of crosses over uh, onto this property, uh, in a couple locations and so they're going to have to reroute that driveway and so they're working with that owner to do that and they were going to show that on their construction plans. The topographic lines at two foot, two foot intervals has been done, so we can remove comment twelve and they did show the sewer getting extended to the west, uh, comment thirteen, so that can be addressed. This uh, development does not have adequate fire flow uh, at this time and so uh, there was a, CUD had indicated some information and some, what the, some improvements that would be required to meet that fire flow. The developer has uh, essentially decided they're going to sprinkle all of the homes uh, and CUD has indicated that they do have five hundred gallons per minute at twenty PSI. And so that's adequate if they sprinkle the homes, so all of this, the homes in this development will have to be, be required to have fire sprinklers installed. So I think we had a few other comments from CUD regarding some, some other things regarding the plans they require and those kind of things, but. So we can, again, we can remove nine, ten, twelve and thirteen and then comment number eleven, we'll just need to reword that to, to show the, that, that driveway being uh, rewritten on their construction plans, so. And then we reword number six to just show the nine one one approval, so. And with that, staff would recommend approval.
Other than the, the couple of items, this is consistent uh, in what's been previously approved and any of the changes staff is comfortable with?
Right.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
Yeah, I didn't neglect this, I just want, do want to point this out because it was a lot of point, a lot of the discussion at the council regarding a buffer between the, the area and they have, and they're showing the buffer that they're going to have there, uh, and, but on all the lots that border, um, the, directly border the property line, they're adding a buffer there. The lots that, if, where there are, there are no lots, if there's open space between the adjoining property, they didn't add buffer, they're just leaving it alone and having an open space. The trees are already there, but where the lots do a but, those are joining properties to the west, they are showing a buffer there, so. Again, that was part of the discussion at the council, so I wanted to point that out.
When I was looking at that, it looked like a fairly robust buffering plan.
It is.
Okay, anything else? I'll entertain a motion then.
Make a motion to approve with staff comments.
Okay, and a second for me. I have a motion to approve with staff comments and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor of approving this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this motion is approved. We are now on to the next item under preliminary plats, which is Newberry Commons. Owner, developer, uh, Newberry Propco LLC and this is on Amble Road.
Yes, this is phase one of this development. It was, uh, this was something that was approved, annexed and, and approved, uh, actually several years ago and then a different developer came in and had a different idea and it was, then the PUD was amended later. So anyway, this is the first phase. It is on Amble Road, uh, as part of that Newberry Commons PUD. There are twenty-two lots as a part of this development, which thirteen of them are single family lots. Some of, seven of them are the villas, which are duplex or zero lot line units, so there'll be fourteen total units there. And then they're showing one townhome lot, that would be the, the, it's one lot with eighty-four units. And then there's one commercial lot, which would be lot, one indicated as lot two. The, um, this is phase one of this, it's twenty-three point nine acres in this phase. With several standard comments, uh, one through four, which would all need to remain. Again, uh, the comment number five, the major thoroughfare plan does designate Amble Road as a minor arterial and they are showing forty feet of right of way from the center line there as a part of that. The, we asked them to submit the construction plans, they've actually uh, done so, so those are under review. The, um, they did label a couple of the road names, but they still need to label the rest of the names and provide nine one one approval of those names. Number eight, they just, will have to have a T-DOT permit for that roadway access and any right of way or any uh, work that would happen in, within that right of way, they'll have to have a permit for that. We, uh, there, there will need to be a separate site plan. Uh, they are showing the kind of the layout of the townhomes and everything, but we will need a full site plan uh, for the townhomes, showing the grading and utilities and landscaping details and all those things for that. So that'll have to come later, they're aware of that, um, and they're fully agreeing to it, they just, but I did want to point that out as a condition. Comment number ten, uh, there was a concern regarding the, the, those villa lots. If they, the total square footage does exceed that thirty-six hundred square foot limitation, what they have indicated is they're, they're going to build a, each of those will be built with a two hour firewall. And so I think that takes care of that issue, but I'll defer to the fire department and the coast department to confirm that, but I do believe that kind of takes care of that issue. Either way, they'll have to either increase the fire flow or, or if that takes care of the issue, it won't be a problem. Comment number eleven, um, the, there's a couple of things here, one to show that existing floodplain elevation. They show a floodplain line, a boundary line, but they don't show the existing actual elevation there. They do show a minimum floor elevations on some of the units, um, so they need to show that elevation. Now, the last part of comment eleven is just a, kind of an informational comment and it is in process of being developed, uh, they will have to submit a, a study to FEMA regarding a letter of map provision as they are going to change the boundaries of the floodplain in that area. Uh, number twelve, to show the proposed utility easement locations and widths, they've done some of those, I think there's still some of those utilities or, those easements aren't shown, so we need to keep that one. Uh, number thirteen is a, kind of an informational comment for them regarding uh, future extension, which would be in a future phase, uh, of Meadow Brook Lane, they will have to have a turnaround plan with the fire code. They, number fourteen, again, this is not an issue for phase one, but in the future phases, uh, they will have to have a, they, there is a connection uh, to an existing road in the back, that would have to be added before they get to that, construction of that hundredth home. They've added enough to that effect to the drawings and again, that was, it's not an issue for this one unless they build the townhomes before they make that second connection, so. And then, um, comment fifteen, um, the amenity, some of the amenity locations uh, have changed somewhat. Some of the townhomes, all the townhomes are the part of the PUD, were going to be rear entry and some of these are not now, and so I did ask them to submit a PRD amendment request primarily to look at the amenities in some of those townhome areas. Uh, the overall road layout and all has not changed or anything like that, it's really just uh, some of those other issues like that, so I have not received that yet. I'm okay with this plat, as it's, that's not going to change anything to do with these roads or the, or the lots, I'm okay with the plat approval uh, being done, because the, the issues that we would be looking at on the amendment would really be structurally to the buildings on the townhome lot or the amenities, so. And then the fifteen, uh, the next comment regarding the, the uh, uh, fire flow, the, the fifteen hundred gallons per minute, that is for the commercial area, lot two. And so they, they know what they need to do for CUD to make that taken care, to take care of that before they develop anything on that commercial lot. Uh, they can't meet the residential requirements of a thousand gallons at twenty PSI, so. I think that's everything. So with those, comment, staff would recommend approval.
Questions?
I have one, Kevin, were the villas fifty-five plus restricted, I thought they, if I recall, they were?
They may be, I have to go back and look at the, I think they were.
In that lower west corner, it's going to be commercial pickleball, as I recall.
Right, yeah, this, this would just be a creation, creating the lots, you know, any development on those, we would see that later, but it's likely.
Come later, but I think that's how.
There was some pickleball courts as well as some other commercial buildings in that area, yes.
Is this for the winery zip, Kevin?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, look at the street names, that would be a giveaway. They uh, they were going across the creek at one time, so.
Well, they are, that, that would be a future phase, it'd be on the other side of the creek, yes, yes. And there'll be a future phase to the west, which would be the top of the plans, that would again, eventually, if you look at page, uh, I think it's two five oh. Kind of shows kind of the sewer routing, um, through that existing, Meadow Brook Lane there, that's an exist, they would tie to that Meadow Brook Lane as well. they would tie to that Meadowbrook Lane as well in a future phase, that would be the kind of second entrance, which would then get you all the way through that development and also over to Amberton, so, neighborhood connectivity.
Kevin, is that cabana amenity, as I recall? Is that an open-air type of big screen TV kind of fire pit thing?
It is. Again, most of those were kind of shown closer to the creek on the plan, and there were some other things shown, so I just asked for them to kind of give us a big picture, if they've changed some of the drawings or whatever, just give us a big picture. It may not be an issue at all, I just want to be sure we see it, know what they're going to do, going to be doing all, as they do the future phases.
Any other questions or comments? I will then entertain a motion. Move to approve with staff comments. I have a motion to approve with staff comments, so I have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this motion is approved. Next, we are on to final plaques. The first item is Greystone, Phase 1D, Rocky Fork Road. Owner, developer, Greystone West LLC.
Yeah, this is just another phase of Greystone. It's 70 lots, 18.06 acres in that Greystone PRD. We had just a couple of minor comments left. Green Tree Drive, which was somewhat included in this, is a collector, and they are showing right-of-way there, 60 feet right-of-way there for that street. I had the owner's signature. We had, we had a comment about the electrical or the utility easements on the front, and they have indicated those are necessary on all those lots, so we are, we can remove comment three, so just with the first two comments, we can, we would, staff would recommend approval. It's seem, consistent with the PRD and the preliminary plat, yes, sir.
Questions for Kevin? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Final plaque, motion is approved. We're next on to Sam Davis Home Properties, Section 1, Lot 1, Nissan Drive and Sam Davis Road. Owner, developer, Sam Davis Memorial Association.
Yeah, this is a one-lot subdivision, it's part of the Sam Davis Home Property, it's about four acres track. Zone is C2. This is a piece of property that was rezoned several months ago, maybe even a year ago now. And so this would create that lot for that commercial area. We had a few comments. The major thoroughfare plan does designate Nissan Drive as a principal arterial and Sam Davis Road as a collector, and there is adequate right-of-way there for both streets. They will need to add the signature of the owner prior to submitting for recording. There is some off-site sewer that's going to be shown or will be extended to this to provide sewer to this, to this lot. They have shown all of that, they did show the easement location, they'll just need to provide documentation that they have obtained that easement and that it will be required to be dedicated to the town as a, as a public easement. Comment four, regarding the minimum side setback in C2, was shown incorrectly in a couple of places, and that's been taken care of and can be removed. Comment number five, just an informational kind of standard comment regarding if there's any work within T-DOT right-of-way, we'll have to have a permit from them. Number six was just regarding labeling of the repurified water line, they have corrected that, and that can be removed. And then comment number seven, they had Director of Public Works still on the signature for the approval of the roads, and that needs to be the town engineer, so that's been, that has been corrected now as well. So we can remove four, six, and seven, and then reword a little bit on comment three. And with those comments, staff would recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin? As far as the Sam Davis Home Property. Sam Davis initially approached us about selling this to get some money to help their proceeds over there, and I think the state blessed it, knowing that they needed some of that money. I say Sam Davis approached us, not Sam.
This was approved about 100 years ago.
150. 150 years ago.
Anything else? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, and do I have a second?
Second.
Couple seconds. A motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. We are now on to site plans. Our first item is Ammerville Retail Center, 1929 Ammerville Road. Owner, developer, Ram Smyrna Partnership, the Kabai J Patel.
So this is a site plan y'all have seen before, I believe it was last year September. It was previously approved. The site also, we did see a site plan come through a couple of months ago for a retail center that has fallen through, so this is coming back to you for reapproval since that previous approval has expired. It is a three-unit retail complex. The site does have road friends along Ammerville Road with one access point. The proposed development is currently two parcels and would need to be combined prior to issuing some permits. The site would have two restaurants, but they drive-through location on the north and south side of the building. Site has adequate stacking for vehicles not to back up onto Ammerville Road. Vehicle use here for the site is point, just over half acre. That does require 2,277 square feet of open space landscaping square footage, they're showing for 5,500 square feet. Total park required of 43 spaces, and they're showing for 46, and that does require two handicap spaces, which they are showing. The landscape plan shows shrubbery planted along Ammerville Road due to the overhead utility easement and underground utility lines. Variety of trees are shown along the northern and southern property lines. The rear property line will require a type C landscape buffer as it abuts the residential district. Currently, a row of arborvitaries is shown along the property line with offset shrubbery behind the sewer easement to create this buffer. Architecture elevations, Smiths show the building to be built with primary material of brick, stone, and glass and glazing. Ephes and fiber cement siding are shown as secondary materials on the front of the building and sides and rear of the building are composed of at least 92% primary materials. The front elevation has 76.42% primary material, which does meet our design review requirements. Standard comments, one through five, all to remain at this time. Staff comments, one through six, are all really more so informational. Comment one is about the combination plat to be recorded prior to issuance of a building permit following the previous site plan dismissal last September. The applicant did submit a final plat to combine these properties, but we do need that to be recorded prior to any building permits being issued. Two, any road, any work within the T-DOT right-of-way, including construction of the new access, does require a permit from T-DOT, and we do need permission of that approval from T-DOT prior to issuance of permits as well. We asked them to submit construction plans for the proposed sewer main. Comment four is about the dumpster enclosure, it looks like it's only capable of holding two dumpsters, and there are for three businesses here, so if there's a future dumpster to be built on the site, or added to the site, we do need that dumpster enclosure to be expanded and meet designer requirements. Comment five is the possibility that a future center, center turn lane on Ammerville Road may be removed. At that time, the access to the site would become a right-in-out only. Comment number six, adequate parking is shown to meet zoning ordinance requirements at this time. The third space within this building cannot be used as a restaurant in order to maintain the adequate parking for the site. Comment number seven, they are showing a retaining wall on the site, we asked them to submit plans for that, and the applicant has, has noted that the design is to be done by others and submitted at a later date. Comment number eight has been addressed regarding discrepancy in square footage is being shown, so that has been addressed, could be removed. Comment number nine is regarding a comment, number 14 note, rather, that note has been updated to accurately reflect the minimum fire flow requirements. Comment number 10, if the building is sprinkled, the FTC will be required to be no less than 30 feet off of the building and within 100 feet of the fire hydrant. Once again, more so of an informational comment, more so than something that needs to be addressed at this time. Number 11 is a utilities comment that has been addressed. Comment number 12, the outfall from the underground detention is shown extending into the public sewer easement, and ask them to provide construction plans showing no conflicts within the sewer line. That is something that can be addressed with the Public Works Department at a later date, so, but that will remain. Comment number 13 is, we asked them to add an additional note to the, to one of the util, or public worksheets, and that has been done, so. Comment number 14 is another addition to the public worksheets, and that has been addressed as well. Comments number 15, 16, and 17 are all CUD comments, so at this time, the, there's a two-inch line that is not sufficient for fire flow, so the applicant has noted there would be a connection point to the 12-inch water line on the other side of Ammerville Road that would service the site, that would then sufficiently meet all fire flow requirements once that is done. But at this time, comments 15, 16, and 17 will remain. Then there was an extra comment, I was looking at these plans earlier, the northernmost restaurant that is proposed, shown the menu board and a speaker of which would be located behind the building projecting towards the residential district behind this building, so without that make, may put some kind of a noise nuance on the adjacent owners, so we asked them to shift that to the northern part of the building and basically minimize whatever disturbances that this development may have on any of the surrounding property owners, so that would be an extra comment we'd like them to address, and with that, staff would recommend approval.
Okay, questions for Mitchell?
Yeah, just to share a story and thank you, we had a similar situation in South Miami with the menu board and pointing right at a residential area, so all night long they heard, do you want to supersize your meal? And so moving it to the north side, I think is, is well done.
On comment number five, does that have anything to do with future improvements of the interchange? It does?
I think it does, I think it's.
Are we thinking that that center lane could be taken out?
Part of T-DOT's interchange project, they will be taken out part of the center lane, and we didn't know how far that might extend down.
So it's in there for what if?
But in the McDonald's area down through that first street, they're showing as part of the interchange to take out the left turn lane.
Are we still a couple of years from that?
Yes.
That improvement?
Three years.
Keeps going out further, doesn't it?
Yes, sir, it does.
You're saying it'll be done in three years? They might, they might start it in three years.
We all need to make sure the public understands that we don't control that intersection, that's federal state highway, so.
But Charles is certainly advocating for us.
But Charles has people, he knows a guy.
Apparently not.
Okay, other questions for Mitchell?
Mitchell, what they've given us here to look at is what the building's going to look like. It looks very similar to what's already currently there beside of it.
Correct, yeah, and it's very similar to what was presented to you last year as well.
Yes, yeah.
Other questions or comments? I will then entertain a motion.
Move to approve with staff comments, including the additional comment on the menu board.
I have a motion from Charles, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second from Charles, further discussion. All those in favor of approving this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. We are now on to our next site plan, Davis Park Commercial Lot 4, corner of Old Nashville Highway and Davis Park Drive. Owner, developer, Richland South LLC, Beltway LLC.
This is currently a vacant tract on the corner of Old Nashville Highway and Davis Park, about one acre in size, and they're showing for a 7,500 square foot retail with a 1,500 square foot restaurant space. That does come out to a 9,000 square foot commercial building on this property. Access to the site would be provided via Old Nashville Highway and Davis Park Drive, and the entrance from Old Nashville Highway will require an access easement from the adjacent parcel, which is parcel 29 to the north, the gas station. So that entrance does kind of split between the two properties, so we do need that easement to be provided because of that. Square footage of vehicle use here of the site, just under a half acre, and that does require 2,134 square feet of landscaping, and they're showing for 2,250 square feet. Parking required of 45 spaces, and they're showing for 47, that does require two handicap spaces, they're showing for four. Landscape plan shows variety of shrubs along Old Nashville Highway and Davis Park Drive. Overhead utility lines prevent trees to be located along the Old Nashville Highway road frontage. However, there are trees shown in landscape islands in the parking lot paralleling Old Nashville Highway. Trees are not shown along Davis Park Drive due to the utility lines underground. Additional shrubbery is shown around the dumpster enclosure as well as at the base of the building. There's another note at the back of this property adjoining the Davis Park condominium complex, that would traditionally, there would be a buffer of sorts in that location. However, currently today, there is a fence and some existing vegetation that is fairly well-established, so in discussions with the applicant and staff, we have decided to let them leave that existing fence and vegetation in that location. In addition, there is a utility easement, so we're trying to keep some new vegetation outside of the easement as well as remaining with the existing buffer that is already in place at this time. Architecture elevations show a mixture of brick, stone, glass, glazing, and fiber cement siding. All four elevations are composed of primary materials with the, primary materials with each wall face having a minimum of 86.65% primary materials. As presented, these elevations do meet designer review requirements. Comments, standard comments, one through five, all to remain, and then a couple staff comments. Staff comment one is regarding the access easement, and the applicant has noted that they are in process of acquiring that easement, so comment one will remain. Comment two is, we asked them to provide the construction type and that the building will be required to be sprinkled, so that is more of an informational comment as well to remain. Comment three, adequate parking is shown to meet zoning ordinance requirements, however, the third building cannot be used as a restaurant in order to maintain adequate parking to meet zoning ordinance requirements, so similar to the last retail site that we just had. Comment number four, the appears the dumpster enclosure is set for two dumpsters, and the same situation with three businesses for two dumpsters. If additional dumpsters are required, the enclosure will have to be increased in size and be designed appropriately to meet designer review requirements. Comment number five is regarding the auto turn that has been addressed and can be removed. Comment number six is the utility comment for the water and sewer main sizes has been addressed, can be removed. Comment number seven shows for the utility, we asked them to submit utility construction plans, so that comment will remain. Comment number eight, we asked them to update a fire flow requirement, and that has been done so, can be removed. Comment number nine was a public works comment regarding, basically, all chemicals must be properly stored, and all spills must be cleaned up, and litter kept to a minimum, so they have addressed that, and that comment can be removed as well. And with that, staff would recommend approval with those remaining comments.
Okay, anything from the commission?
Mitch, on item one, staff comments, that's adjacent to the gas station there, do we, is that a noted ingressy grist driveway for them?
We could not find one, if there is one. We asked them to provide it if there was one.
I mean, it's used as one.
Essentially, today, yes, it's, it's possible that is sold at this point, that there was not one ever provided at the time. Now that we have this going on, we need to make it, so it's.
So there would only be one driveway there regardless?
There's two. On the north part of, on the Old Nashville Highway side, there would only be one entrance, correct?
Well, that's my point, so you would just have one coming in to the gas station and to this structure? Or would there be two?
There's just.
They're not side-by-side entrances, what I'm. They're not side by side entrances, is what I'm.
No, it's, it's one large, yes.
All right, okay, that's what I understand, thank you.
It's oversized, isn't it?
Correct.
Yeah, it is, it's, it's pretty big. I thought, what were we doing, putting another one there?
Yeah.
It would not be, there'd be a new one to Davis Park.
Okay, all right, that's what I was trying to get clarification, thank you.
Also, Mitchell, that I think it said proposed is like a uh, restaurant in the big space?
Correct, uh, no, um, actually the sma- one of the smaller spaces would be a restaurant. Would be in the northern, and I believe.
Okay, closest to the gas station?
Yep.
All right, so with that, will they, are they thinking about doing a drive-through over there?
There's not one shown.
Correct.
Reason I'm asking, what about stacking if they decide to do that?
So the way this site is designed, the northern drive aisle adjacent to the gas station is shown as a one-way lane.
Right.
Due to the size of the building, the way the site's configured, it's only wide enough to accommodate for one vehicle, so essentially it's for the trash truck to drive up there, pick up the trash and leave. There wasn't a stacking lane shown, um, I don't know what the ideas for this restaurant, if they sit in only or what the exact ideas.
I'm just saying, if it, if they wanted to put a dry, a pickup, they could drive through, they could put it in there.
Correct.
Yeah.
Other questions? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments from Tim, do I have a second? Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor of approving this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this motion is approved. Our next site plan is Redstone Federal Credit Union, corner of Sam Ridley Parkway and Huggin Lane. Owner developer, Redstone Federal Credit Union.
This is a site plan for Redstone Federal Credit Union, they're proposing for a six thousand, six hundred and forty-five square foot facility. Uh, this would have two separate tenants as part of this building for the total of that six thousand, six hundred and forty-five square feet. Uh, there would be three drive-through lanes as part of the bank. The location proposed has road fringe on Sam Ridley Parkway and Huggin Lane. Access to the site would be provided via a single access point off of Huggin Lane and the, this entrance would align with the opposing Jackdaw Drive, which is a public road. Vehicular use area for the site, uh, just over three quarters of an acre at point seven six. That does require for three thousand, three hundred and thirty-five square feet of open space landscaping, they're showing for three thousand, five hundred and twenty square feet, so meeting the requirement. Total park required of forty-five spaces and they're showing for forty-five. And that does require two handicap parking spaces and two are shown. The landscape plan shows a variety of trees and shrubbery shown throughout the site. The base of the building has a multitude of shrubbery with, shrubs with shrubs and trees within the landscape islands around the parking lot. Streetscaping along Sam Ridley Parkway does not have trees due to the presence of utility easements. Shrubbery is shown in this area in lieu of a mixture of trees and shrubs. Streetscaping shown along Huggin Lane was previously shown within the right-of-way, uh, at the time the packets went out, so since we received revised plans earlier this week, that streetscaping has been taken outside of the right-of-way, is now on the subject property, however, it is now located within a electric easement. So depending on what Mill Tennessee electrics uh, landscape requirements are, they may need to revise, either A revise the landscaping or B shifted out of their easement. They have sufficient space on that Huggin Lane side of this property to shift the landscaping outside of that easement and still meet streetscaping requirements, so. More than likely, that's what we'll recommend them doing, uh, compared to meeting Mill Tennessee electric requirements because those are probably a bit more restrictive than what is required by streetscaping, design standards are concerned. Architecture elevations, uh, for the east elevation facing Sam Ridley Parkway is to have seventy-seven point three percent primary materials of brick and glass glazing. EFS makes up twenty point eight percent and one point nine percent composed of aluminum battens. The remaining three elevations are to have no less than seventy-five percent primary materials. In total, one point six percent of the building is to have accent materials and twenty-two point one percent secondary materials. The designer review permits maximum ten percent of accent materials for the entire building and it requires at least seventy-five percent primary materials. As proposed, this building does meet the des- designer review manual. Standard comments one through five to remain and staff comment one, we asked them to resubmit the auto turn. Uh, they have adjusted the drive-through lane, so the way the fire, fire truck would move throughout the site, they would come in through uh, off Huggin Lane, basically traverse the entire site, bypass the drive-through lanes, there's typically a canopy at banks for drive-throughs, so they have widened that area right there and reduced the canopy over that side lane, the end lane right there, so the fire truck can now adequately move throughout the site safely, so uh, comment one can be removed. Comment number two was kind of tags along with comment number one about the auto turn, so that can be removed as well. Comment number three, we asked them to show the domestic water meters. Remove one of the domestic water meters, we're under the impression there was only one business for this site, there are two, so the two water, domestic water meters does make sense now, so. Uh, it's, it's fine as shown and that comment can be removed. Comment number four, we asked them to show adequate streetscaping along Huggin Lane outside of the public ri- right-of-way. So like I mentioned, it was previously inside the right-of-way, it has been moved outside. We just, we would, staff would recommend the mo- shifting outside of the easement entirely and just still meeting our streetscaping requirement outside of Mill Tennessee electrics, uh, electric easement. Comment number five, uh, asked about the two businesses and they have addressed that comment can be removed. And then additional comment number six, this tags along with the previous items regarding the parking number, uh, due to the way the parking has been calculated for the site, that second tenant cannot be a restaurant um, due to the parking being met at this time, but not in the future if a restaurant is added, so. I would just want to add that comment, make it more of a standard comment, so with that, staff would recommend approval.
Okay, we've heard from Mitchell on this, so do we have any questions? I will uh, then entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve, staff comments from Mike, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor of approving this motion, say a five by saying aye. Opposed, this motion is approved. Our next item is Stewart Creek Station, northeast corner of Poplarwood Drive and Ammable Road. Owner developer, Mayan Twenty Twenty Two Inc., Hardik Patel.
This is a newer site plan that you have seen last year at, basically the approval for the site plan has expired. It was reviewed back in October of twenty twenty-two. The, the site is located on the corner of Seminary Road, Poplarwood Road, and Almaville Road. The proposed building is to be about forty-five hundred square feet in size and the final plat has been submitted to staff to subdivide the property, but has not been recorded at this time. As proposed, there would be two access points, Seminary Road and Almaville Road. The applicant is proposing an access onto Almaville Road, which is a TDOT roadway, and agreement will need to be coordinated between the owner and TDOT to create this access point. Square footage of vehicular use area for the site, forty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-six square feet, which does require four thousand, six hundred and forty-six square feet of landscaping. They're showing for fifty-two hundred square feet. Total parking, forty-five spaces are showing for fifty-seven, and that does require three handicap spaces and they're showing for three as well. Landscape plan shows variety of maple, maple trees along the three road fringes with shrubbery planted around the perimeter of the site. Trees are also shown within landscape islands. Architecture elevations submitted show the building to be built with primary materials of brick, two different types of stone and glass glazing with an accent material of aluminum. The building is proposed to be built entirely of primary materials, as shown the elevations do meet designer review requirements. There was a traffic study submitted as part of this uh, development, uh, back when it was going through rezoning, there was quite a bit of discussion about traffic from the surrounding property owners, so as a result, traffic study was submitted, just to recap what was required as, rec- recommended as part of this traffic study, to provide a eastbound left turn lane on Almaville Road. Widen the shoulder on Almaville Road where needed to maintain existing width. Remove and re-stripe pavement markings on Almaville Road from Poplarwood Road to the east approximately seven hundred and fifty feet. Install a right turn overlap signal head for the westbound Almaville Road and to install a right turn overlap signal head for the southbound Poplarwood Road. Standard comments one through five all to remain, we had a couple of staff comments, uh, staff comment one regarding the subdivision plat to create the two parcels and be required to be required to be submitted prior to issuance of a building permit. This will need to include the ingress egress easement across Lot Two benefiting Lot One. An entrance is shown on Almaville Road, the current gravel drive at this location has not been permitted by TDOT and TDOT approval will be required for the entrance and must meet all of TDOT design standards. Three is regarding the traffic study and all, any improvements must be completed by the developer. The TIS has been submitted and staff has the following comments. Left turn lane shown on Almaville Road onto the project site. Begin the right turn lane from Almaville Road onto Poplarwood Road after the project site entrance in order to, not to confuse drivers with the p- project site entrance. The site distance has been checked for the project site exit onto Almaville Road. Bring signal equipment up to current town of Smyrna standards, install this connection on, install connection to Smyrna Traffic Operations Center for remote phasing. Replace signal heads as needed for new turn mo- turning movements, conduct timing study to input different timing plans for peak hour traffic. The signal will be part of the overall ITS project phases three, four, and five. And make Poplarwood Road at Foxland Drive intersection always stop. We asked what the fire flow was for this site and it does need to be a minimum of fifteen hundred gallons per minute at twenty PSI. We asked them to provide the construction type as it may affect the minimum fire floor requirements. Comment number six regarding the CUD and comment number seven was also a CUD comment. Comment number eight, uh, got with Charles on this and we have a couple uh, town recommendations. Comment number A was regarding the Almaville Road portion of this, we asked the left turn lane on Almaville Road uh, into the site. Two, begin the right turn lane from Almaville Road onto Poplarwood Road after the project site entrance in order not to confuse drivers with the project site entrance. And comment number three, the site distance has been checked with, for the project site exit onto Almaville Road. B was Almaville Road at Poplarwood, traffic signal. Bring tr- bring signal equipment up to current town of Smyrna standards, install connection to Smyrna Traffic Operations Center for remote phasing. Replace signal heads as needed for new turn, turning motions. Conduct timing study to in- input different, different timing p- plans for peak hour traffic and incorporate it into the TDOT ITS project phases three, four, or five. As far as Poplarwood and Foxland Drive are concerned, to make an always stop. Recommendations, staff recommends approval with the above listed comments, recommendeds, recommendations as recommended as a result of the traffic study. As part of the previous approval, the commission did require the installation of the stop signs at Foxland Drive and Poplarwood Drive and install the ITC sync system, so. Lot of recommendations, um, basically this last one I just read kind of reiterates what was previously mentioned, so. All that, staff would recommend approval.
As I recall, and I'm trying to remember who was here, Mark was here, Tim, Mike, you were here, right? We had a lot of conversation ar- around this, this lot originally was a industrial lot, which could have lent itself to a lot of uh, industrial tri-.
It used to be, it used to be a trash recycling center.
Exactly.
Well, that's behind the two, so.
Yeah, yeah. But we, we, we looked at that perspective and then we had a lot of input from uh, you know, surrounding neighbors as far as what, what their concerns were from a traffic perspective. And we worked closely with Charles to address those issues and, and Charles, I'll ask you, are you still comfortable with this and is there anything further you would recommend?
Yeah, we, everything's in that Mitch has brought up items for that I've already started from the step and so we're good.
Okay. Okay, any other uh, questions or comments? Go ahead.
The lot next door, this was all one lot, but they're gonna divide it, so now it's gonna, it will become two lots.
Correct.
Okay, the empty lot. What, what could potentially go there as far as traffic in and out of this as well to add whatever traffic's coming in or not, I know we got signals, but.
It is zone, it's on C two, uh, so any of your.
So could a, could a restaurant go in there?
Correct.
Okay.
Restaurant, retail, another gas station, um.
So they would have to go to the back of this property where the dumpster's at to get another exit out of that property?
To have a secondary.
Yes, yes.
To have more than the one that's in the front.
Right, yes.
If they get the one that's in the front, that's still to be determined, correct?
Yeah, that's a TDOT permit for that, yes.
And it's pushed quite a ways back on that property, it has to be, so.
Because of the curb there.
Yes, yes, and the turn lane, it runs into that turn lane pretty quick. There's a current one there, 'cause that where their entrance is shown, there's a little gravel pull-off.
Yeah, that was never permitted by TDOT, but yes, that, that's basically the location, yes.
Yeah, that would be my only concern is traffic if they were, if somebody decided, hey, we want to put a restaurant there on the corner.
Yeah, and we can always.
Put something with high, high traffic flow getting in and out.
And we would have to have another traffic study, depending on what it is, potentially have another traffic study and it may be that you have to synchronize signals differently or, or whatever at that point, you already have the left turn lane, um. You have, would have the connection where they could come out at the light to.
Originally, we talked about that being uh, right turn only onto Ammable, didn't we?
That should be turned by TDOT. If they allow the left out or not, whether they make it a right in or right out or left, that will be their final call.
Charles, is there anything that you see short future-wise, uh, where they're gonna expand out of the road here? Widen it anymore all the way to eight forty or anything?
There's nothing current with TDOT, no.
Any need for pedestrian access from Belmont subdivision there?
You're talking along Almaville Road?
Is that normally on a highway like that?
There's no curb there, you have the shoulder, um.
No sidewalk or anything?
There's no sidewalks currently in, within Belmont, um.
There's no sidewalks running along Almaville today either.
Yeah, anywhere along Almaville Road. I see what you're saying.
People will walk over there.
People will probably do that, so, yeah, um. And there's no way to get to it except Almaville Road from Belmont.
Cutting through somebody else's yard.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that would have to be something we, that's a bigger picture working with TDOT too, because it's a state highway to add the sidewalk and all, um. Even if we were, had them put it in front of this track, had, we have to, town or somebody would have to go in and build the rest of it to get over to, to Belmont.
But from Belmont to where this entrance is gonna be the first one, it is a pretty good gravel shoulder out there, isn't it, if I remember right?
It is.
It's pretty good.
Pretty wide, it's four, maybe four or five feet, maybe even six feet.
Yeah, drops off a little bit.
Potentially would have a walkway without being in the road.
Yeah, there's a lot of birmingham up in Belmont too, landscaping and stuff, yes. Just a question.
Other questions or comments? Then I'll entertain a motion.
Move with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve from Charles with staff comments, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this motion is approved. Our next item, uh, under site plans is Zomi Christian Church Inc., eight fifteen Rock Springs Road. Owner developer, Marjolus Holdings LLC.
This is another site plan that has expired, uh, it was previously approved back in January last year. Uh, so they have came back again to seek reapproval for this. The project would conclu- would include a worship hall, about ten thousand, six hundred and eight square feet and a fellowship hall, about nine thousand, two hundred and eight square feet in size. Property's zone R three and the applicant submitted the request for a religious facility within a residential district to the Board of Zoning Appeals, uh, February of twenty twenty-one. Uh, one of the conditions of approval is that the requirement, a landscape buffer be installed along the eastern property line adjoining the, the residential lot there. The applicant is showing a type A landscape buffer to meet this condition. Two access points are proposed off of Rock Springs. Two access points are proposed off of Rock Springs Road on the eastern and western boundaries of the parcel. And there is also a TVA easement crossing perpendicular through the middle of the site. And due to this, you have the buildings on the front of the property and then most of the parking sitting on the back of the property, because they will not allow buildings to be located within, with inside that easement. Square footage of vehicle or use area, 1.92 acres, and that does require 8,394 square feet of landscaping. They're showing for 10,500 square feet. Parking required of 168 spaces, and they're showing for 176. That does require six handicap parking spaces, and they're showing for six as well. The landscape plan shows a landscape buffer along the eastern property line bordering the residential lot as well as along the western property line. Shrubs and trees are proposed lining Rock Springs Road as well as within landscape bounds and around the base of each building. Architecture elevations show a primary material of brick with EFS visible from all sides. Designer view requires at least 75% of the building facade visible from the public street to be clad in primary materials. Staff believes as presented that it is going to meet designer view with that 75% threshold being met of primary materials. Standard comments one through four to remain, and staff comment one regarding a discrepancy of who the actual owners of those tracks were is shown in the plans, that has been addressed and can be removed. Comment four, we asked them to submit construction plans for the public water and sewer mains, that will remain. Comment number three, sanitary sewer easement across the adjoining property to Old Nashville Highway has not been dedicated to the town as a public easement. A public sewer line is shown within this easement. For this to occur, the easement will have to be dedicated to the town by the adjoining property owner. So the applicant has addressed that comment by stating that we will begin the process of getting a public sewer easement dedicated instead of a private easement. So that comment will remain, and that's just figuring out how the site will be serviced by sewer off of Old Nashville Highway. Four was regarding the auto turn that has been addressed and removed, and then comment number five was a public works comment for the ripper application at the outfall structure, and that has been addressed as well. So staff comment two and three will remain, and staff does recommend approval with those comments.
Questions for Mitchell on this?
So really, nothing's changed since we approved it?
Same plan, yep.
Anything else? I will entertain a motion then. I have a motion to approve with staff comments, so I have a second. Second. Motion and a second to approve with staff comments, any further discussion? All in favor of approving this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. We are now on to a mandatory referral, Rocky Fork, Ammerville Road, right-of-way and easement acquisition.
Yeah, this is, we mentioned earlier tonight, regarding the Rocky Fork, Ammerville Road, the town is preparing to attain some right-of-way and easements for the widening of Rocky Fork, Ammerville Road. This would widen the road from Ammerville Road to, to Rocky Fork Road. The first phase will be from the Derby Run Development to Morton Lane. We did attach some plans that show kind of the proposed locations of that right-of-way and easements to be required as a part of this project. The planning commission is required to review the obtaining of these easements and right-of-way and find whether or not it is in keeping with the adopted conference of plan of the town and make a recommendation to the town council. Staff would recommend approval.
Kevin concerning this mandatory referral of the right-of-way and easement acquisition. Are there any questions concerning this?
Move to approve with staff comments?
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? This motion is approved. We are now on to the December bond review report.
Yeah, we have a short one tonight, thankfully, we've got a couple we can release, so that's good too. One is the Ryan Smith Properties, which is a small bond we have for a sewer line, a small sewer line extension. That has now been completed and we can release that one. The next one is the Alta Vista subdivision. This is the end of their maintenance period. Everything has been completed, everything's finished there, so we can release that one as well. And then the Stewart's Creek cottages, this one's about 66% built out. There's still some items to be completed there, certainly. To talk to that developer, they did ask for an extension till next summer, the, they still have several lots to build there, and so they had to request an extension. With, it is one we've had for two years now, and so we would recommend a six-month extension for that, and that's all I've got.
Questions for Kevin concerning the bond review report?
Always the highlight of the meeting.
Well, we got a little bit of an early Christmas present with a couple of releases, didn't we?
Yeah.
Okay. Do I have a motion? Have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the bond review report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bond review report is approved. Uh, we are now on to staff comments.
I don't have anything else tonight.
Counselor? Catherine? Charles? Todd? Should I go around the room, are we good? I'll see if I get chief and captain, though. I'll give you guys a pat, okay. Give you a badge. This is our last meeting before Christmas, and Mark, did you?
Yeah, I talked to Catherine this past week, and she's going to sit over all quiet-like and pretend she hasn't done anything good. But Catherine, and correct me if I'm incorrect on some of this, but she is graduating this month with honors, right? Her Bachelor of Science and five honor cords, did I get that right?
Yep.
And tell us how that came about a little bit. In other words, how'd you come about getting this education?
I used the Town of Smyrna reimbursement program.
It's awesome.
To obtain my associate's and bachelor's degree.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Just wanted to brag on you a little bit tonight.
Dennis, do you have a guest with us tonight?
I do.
Why don't you all come up and let's get an introduction here?
This is Christie Worrell, she is our new building official and director of codes for the Town of Smyrna.
Christie, welcome.
Thank you.
Christie, you're hanging out with a pretty rough gentleman right there.
It's, it's, it's hard, but someone has to do it.
He's a good one.
Christie will do us a great job.
You gonna hang around for a little bit?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Christie, welcome.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Wish everybody Merry Christmas.
Yeah, from the, from the planning commission, wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and we'll see you sometime in January. Something tells me it'll be that first Thursday there.
Pretty quick, that's just the New Year's week.
Yeah, I mean, we've gone through a whole year, so, there you go. All right.
Where's, where's the egg on?
It's in the back.